Call to order the Trinity County Board of Supervisors meeting for October 16. Would you please leave us at this point?
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, our nation, our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good please, to the board, I would like to introduce an item for closed session addendum. Closed session, public employee appointment, Agriculture Commission, and sales ways of measurement.
All right, public comment. This time is for information from the public on matters not appearing on this agenda. All comments limited to three minutes and must pertain to matters within the jurisdiction of this board and addressing the board through state your name for the record and address the board as a whole through the chair. No action or discussion will be conducted on matters not listed on the agenda, however, the chair may refer the subject matter to the appropriate department for follow-up or schedule a matter on a subsequent board agenda.
Good morning, Diana Sheen. I live up towards Barbara Avenue and the clinic, and also I use the corner of Garden Gulch and 299 on a regular basis. And I would, and hopefully you would take it to the appropriate agency for this, to they, the drivers that come down that hill from the, from the Junction City side are speeding so fast that within the last week and a half, I have seen them, and they're up there, I guess I have to wait for them to be gone because suddenly I've almost been hit twice in the last week and a half. And also that relates also to that clinic area. That's going to bring, and I talked about it two years ago when it came up, that it's going to bring more and more of that kind of traffic. And I've been passed in the middle of town by speeders. We need a lot more CHP. We have them. We need them to realize any time of the day that that is an unsafe area, and, and it needs to be ticketed so that people will know to slow down. It's, somebody's going to, there's people you guys walk across there, they just, some of these drivers just turn that corner right in front of your car, and even though you're starting to advance out, and it's just an unsafe corner, and it needs to be watched and given tickets to. That's the only warning, I mean, it's the only thing that they can do that might slow them down because it's unsafe. Thank you very much.
Terry Nagel, and this is going to take three minutes and 30 seconds. Judy, you're the longest-term supervisor currently serving. You have seen, I believe, all of my appearances over the years. You know that I've asked for help when Mr. Santiago refused me power for my commercial property where I was in my sixth year of concerts. Do you remember me giving you a skit of Jim's mocking performance? The takedown of my festival by a department head who ran away from his post in another part of the Emerald Triangle for getting caught using county equipment and counting time to forward on to other agencies racist jokes about Mexicans? You can Google it. Do you remember how hurt I was that my son and granddaughter, who are in the same grade, on the same page of the yearbook, would not be graduating together? And to make it worse, they graduate the same night, three hours apart? Anytime I've come across you, or you've come to my place of business, or in a parking lot on the street, you never mention or acknowledge the fact of how many times I've been before you. Okay. Keith, my time is short. Because you appointed the doctor to take care of me and this matter, I wait to hear your assessment of the task handed to your new CAO and decide if you feel this one test case is acceptable for now and for the future to the county's citizens for how taking care of a citizen's concern is followed through. I just want to know, does Mr. Coons have your rubber stamp of support on his decision on how to take care of me? Or can we take this case study and clearly decide what are the boundaries that we are going to allow our citizens to be exposed to? Dr. Coons' actions is to strip me of my valid license and start completely over as if it's 2005 and I'm putting my trailer together and I've been permitted since 2005. I reject his order. You know, it's ridiculous by many measures. Right here is my license, valid license that I have from the county to operate. And I'm going to return to the next supervisors meeting to see what you have learned about my case. And if you agree with Dr. Coons, I'll give you my, if you ask me, I'll give you my license, my valid license. And that in itself will set the standards by which business owners and citizens can expect to be treated in this county. I actually support Dr. Coons because in my conversations with him, he's repeatedly has said that he believes these kind of positions that Mr. Tippett and other department heads have is a, a public service, a public relations kind of position. If he keeps his mind focused on that, when he's making decisions, I believe this county will be much better off. I'll see you at the next supervisors meeting. Thank you.
And I, I do plan on using my license until that meeting. Thank you.
Morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Tom Balanco, Douglas City. I know later in the meeting, we're going to get to reports from department heads and talk about campus licensing because we simply can't get enough of that subject. And we'll go over how many licenses have been issued and probably maybe some many, how many applications. I'm curious, how many denials of licenses have been issued? I'm not talking NRA, or, you know, somebody in R1, or somebody who didn't get a variance from their neighborhood. I want to know how many people in the program that is trying to work with the county have been denied that license opportunity. I have a guess. I think it's one. This one. That I got on October 2nd. I would go into a whitney about why it's inappropriate, but it doesn't have a reason on there. I'm sure when this form was submitted, there's probably an insert paragraph section here to say list the reasons. That one's not filled out. I got this at 8:57 in the morning. At 8:59, I sent an email back saying, what are the reasons for this? Still waiting for my reply on that. Now, I'm not concerned about this in my situation. I actually have enough confidence in the due process that are built into the ordinance that I, and find that will wind its way through the process. I'm not worried about that. What concerns me, and ought to concern you, is that this went to somebody else and this were taken as final county action on October 2nd, otherwise known as harvest time. How clueless does that explain where our planning department is on this issue? That eight months into a season, you're going to issue a denial? First of all, language is mistaken too. It's not a denial, this is not my first application. My first application was in 2016. This is a rescission. That alone. This is another example of a staff that is not keeping up with the program. And I know many people in this room have had to do damage control, spend way more time picking up the pieces that should be handled by staff. But what we've also got to know is these things cost money and they expose the county to problems. I don't want to sue the county. I will if I have to, but, you know, I would prefer to see us work together and get this program under control. I know that involves hard decisions, but those are the ones we have to make. Thank you.
Morning, Chair, members of the board. Jay Grossman, Chris Hayford. I guess I'd like to first publicly thank Rick Tippett for getting Highway 3 paved. It's awesome. And also, I'm really happy to see the new DA is here. I'm not even going to start to address what Tom just spoke about, mainly because I don't even know where to start with it. It's shameful. But this whole year, as many of you guys have noticed, I haven't been at the meetings in a while. My wife hasn't been at the meetings in a while. This whole year, this whole process has been a sham, a mockery. I believed in this and believed in the outcome of this probably as much if not more than anybody else in this community. You know, I'm excited to see the new DA here because I'm hoping at some point, my family will hear something about maybe getting our computers and iPads and stuff back with our baby photos on them that were taken when our licensed farm was raided? Oh, on the money, licensed product? You know, everybody talks about the community up here, the community, the community. There is a community. There's an incredibly tight community. And I wouldn't want to live anywhere else in the world. But this county government doesn't really seem to be part of this community. And I know I'm sitting here looking at everybody on the board, and I know literally all of you pretty personally, some more than others. And I don't mean this personally, but I mean our county government as a whole doesn't really feel part of this community. I could go on and on about the things that I'd love to see changed, which I've done for years now in front of the board. But this program isn't working the way that it's, you know, theoretically it would work great, but realistically, it doesn't work great. You know, we've got guys like Tom having his license taken when it's clear as day in this ordinance, you have 90 days from the issuance of state licensing to become involved in the state program, or you're kicked out of the program. Most of the people I know in this licensing program haven't even applied for a state license yet. Our planning department doesn't care. They care more about somebody's shed that was built in 1976 that wasn't permitted than they do about the fact that these people aren't even enrolled in the single thing that you need to legally sell this product. Where is, where is even the rational thinking behind that? So we've got to get this on track. We've got to get our heads out of the sand. We've got to figure this out, and it's not just one department, it's not just one person. It's this community as a whole. We've got to get this thing figured out. Because if I'm standing here saying, I don't know if I can do this in Trinity County, how is anybody else going to do it here? Thank you.
All right, anybody else? All right, with that, we'll come back to the board. We have presentations. 1.1, receive a presentation from Human Response Network Empowerment Services Program Director Julie Goldston regarding the Presley Fund Annual Domestic Violence Report.
Hi, good morning, everyone, and thank you for having me here. We are extremely grateful for the support here in Trinity County for survivors of domestic violence. And we are really happy that the contribution from marriage licensing fees are going to survivors of domestic violence. This year alone, in this last grant year, we served 142 survivors. And we rely on funds to help survivors there who need establishing new homes, legal help, and also to be accompaniment to the emergency room, court hearings and such. So, and we are very impressed at Human Response Network with the response from law enforcement and the criminal justice system. And as you might see in the report, I want to highlight one thing that was significant for me when I put the report together, is that this year, the jump in times that domestic violence advocates responded to calls from law enforcement jumped from 54 to 100. And we are extremely impressed that they are always very professional and take every case serious, and also treat every survivor with the utmost dignity. So we want to say thank you for that. And I don't know if any of you have seen, but we put an installation in the meadow yesterday, and that is to symbolize the 142 survivors that we served in the last grant year. And we have put a purple flag and a solar light for each survivor so that it should symbolize their bravery in this really tough time that they have to go through. So, and as you will also see, that there's also an invitation in your package for this Friday, we are having a awareness event at the Congregational Church where we will be giving out awards to members of the community that has especially done and really above and beyond work to serve survivors of the domestic violence. And we hope to see you all there. So, thank you.
Questions?
I just thank you for your work and your staff.
Thank you, and thank you for your support.
Okay, consent agenda. These items include routine, non-controversial matters that will be acted upon by the board by one. Roll call motion. Remember, the board's staff and public may request an item to be pulled and considered separately. Supervisor Chapman? Supervisor Morris? Supervisor Finley?
No, sir.
Supervisor Mike?
Yes, sir.
I want to pull 2.13. All right, and main staff? How about the public? All right, with that, go ahead.
Actually, would you entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented, Chair?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, now. Supervisor Moore?
Yes.
Supervisor Finley?
Yes.
Supervisor Hallen?
Yes.
Supervisor Mike?
Yes.
Okay. Item 2.13, true amendment number 2 to the agreement, the train tire factory increasing the maximum cost of $40,000 for general tire repair and/or replacement, vehicle repair service, emergency vehicle road service, and other vehicle maintenance to Trinity County Sheriff's Office as needed, as a needed basis, no impact to general fund, additional $40,000 from sheriff budget for a total of $80,000. Good morning. So my question is, is I went through the contract, our first contract for '17, '18 started at $15,000. Then we raised it to $25,000, and then we added a year to the contract to go to $19,000. So you're asking for another $40,000, but still only to go to $19,000. So I have two thoughts. That was a pretty large jump in money, but the other thought is, is you're going to have to be back here in a month or two to ask to go to year 20.
To go to year 20?
Yes.
At that time, I believe we would be doing a contract, a full contract.
So you'd be starting the whole?
Correct. Yes.
And then, so why the big jump?
The additional $40,000 that we're requesting, I spoke with the business manager and just with the bills that we've already approved, but the fires are opening this summer, and I'm looking forward to the next few months until we'll be redoing a contract for the next year. She suggested the $40,000 carry through.
For the next four months?
Yes.
Okay, so I guess the question, I don't know if that's for you, is that money that cost in the fires, is that reimbursable?
I don't know, I think so.
All right, I don't have any further questions. Anybody from the public?
I don't have any questions on that.
All right, so I would entertain a motion. All right, all those in favor, stick a mic if I've seen an aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. All right, I have two reports, report from department heads. Wow, we got a couple people jumping.
Good morning. Ladi Garza, Director Health and Human Services at OES. Just a few updates I wanted to give the board. We wanted to be sure to share with you that through our opioid coalition grant that we received through partnership, you know, we were distributing and training several departments between behavioral health, the sheriff's office, probation, free distribution of Narcan. And we were able to get a report back that behavioral health did a wonderful job in administering for Narcan that saved four lives. So we had four instances where with the help of Narcan, they were on the verge of overdosing on opioids and just saved their life. So just wanted to give a shout out to behavioral health for doing a good job in sharing that with their clients and information sharing. So that's good, positive news for you. And another thing I wanted to share with you on behalf of public health, we are in the flu season. We are reaching out to all schools in Trinity County. So basically, every child will be offered the flu vaccine with the proper parental consent forms. So I have these scheduled for each of the areas in your districts where there will be a point of dispensary for the flu. We will also have our drive-through flu clinic at the Performing Arts Center here in Louisville on November 1st. So just wanted to share that with you, make sure if you're interested, that will be open to the public. On behalf of OES, I am going to get a conference call today to pursue more information on getting the emergency 211 system for Trinity. Again, that's just the emergency 211. So that's something that I've been really struggling to try to see how we can get that implemented in our county, because I did find it to be an area that could help us in information sharing to the public for information on sheltering, you know, donation centers, just some basic information that we can provide if we have another incident regarding whether it's fire or any type of natural disaster. So again, I have information on all the different dispensaries for the flu. If you need to have it for your districts, I have them. If you need, you can just email me, and I'll share that with you. Okay?
Why don't you just go ahead and email Tom?
Okay, sure. Yes, no problem. And that's all I have to report. Does any questions?
So I have one question real quick, just to follow up with the situation with Helen Stone and the reconciliation between the flus being offered to seniors.
Yes.
Does that, the follow-up on that?
Yes, we were able to work with the, the Hayford Clinic to work out something to provide. Actually, it's my understanding they did issue 75 flu shots in Hayford last weekend. So there was something arranged during Helen Stone and the pandemic.
So thank you, Supervisor Finley, too, having part to do with that.
Yeah, I appreciate the updating, and we definitely want to reach out as soon as we can. So it's nice to get that information. Okay? Thank you.
Good morning. Clark Recorder, Assistant Shannon White. Just wanted to report that, you know, this current election cycle is well on its way. We're at E21, three weeks from election day. Once again, I've invited a grand jury to come and observe any processes that they wish to observe, and they're taking us up on that. They're going to come in, they're going to, they have a group of about five different individuals, so they'll be popping in and out. Election materials have been in the mail, so we're encouraging voters, if they have not received their voting materials, please contact us sooner rather than later. Don't wait till the last minute, so that we can make sure they get everything that they need so they can vote. Another announcement I want to make, that I'm sure everyone will be real happy about, we were awarded the SCAP grant to participate in that program. That's a state supplemental county assessors program. That's that program. This program will allow us to buy a new property management system. So it's pretty exciting. You guys approved the resolution August 21st to have those matching dollars for us, because it's a two-for-one match. Yeah, I'm pretty proud of that. So this money is not available for staffing at all. It's only for IT stuff to buy software with, and it's only available this year, '18, '19 year. So it's imperative that I get started on that, get a software program purchased, and the conversion starts, and we can get it done after the end of the year. That's all I have, so if you have any questions?
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Is that fiscal year or?
Fiscal year, '18, '19, yeah. Thank you.
Sorry, Shelley.
It's okay.
Good morning, Tim Rogers, Chief Probation Officer. I just wanted to update the board on the status of SB 10 bail reform. So I attended some meetings in San Diego in September, and we were working on some of the issues, not only legislative implementation issues, but also some of the funding issues regarding SB 10. And just wanted to let the board know that we are currently looking at the possibility of a floor amount of funding for rural counties of the equivalent of two full-time positions. Essentially, just to back up a couple of steps here, the bail reform removes the cash bail system and replaces it with a system based on assessments of risk and makes determinations of release and release supervision or monitoring provisions based on risk. In order to implement the program, counties would need to not only do risk assessments of all individuals that are arrested to make a determination of whether they risk out as low, medium, or high risk, and then depending on if they meet certain conditions, they may be eligible for release with certain types of monitoring. We do see this as a public safety issue for the benefit of the public. We do see this as a public safety issue for the benefit of the public in that with this new system, individuals will not be able to basically buy their freedom with money they have if they pose an unreasonable risk to the community. In addition, individuals that are released that have a moderate level of risk, the judges can set certain release conditions, which would include a pre-trial monitoring. So in addition to the floor amount of funding that we're looking at for two BTEs in county, we also are working on some implementation funds that may also come into this fiscal year as unanticipated revenue to the departments. We're working on implementation of this new program. A lot of this is based upon us contracting with the courts to run the pre-trial monitoring and assessment programs. And I have already been working with our local courts. And we'll be entering into a letter of intent here shortly for that money to be passed through judicial council, through our courts, to probation. So if you have any questions, I'll pause there. If you have any questions on bail reform or any of the funding associated with it.
How long is the funding lasting? Fiscal year, next year, this year?
This will be ongoing funding.
Okay.
However, you know, there's always the possibility that some additional state aid and resources could be pulled back.
Who will be responsible for it then?
The county. However, it's, well, let me back up. If the county, yeah, if, that's okay. If the county contracts with the court, then the county would be responsible for it. However, it is the court's responsibility ultimately. So if the county either chose not to perform this function for the courts, or if we opted out at some point in the future, like statutorily, the courts are responsible for overseeing this program or implementing.
So we can maybe have something else.
The, is so, is bail, if you're a medium-level offender or risk, is there still bail involved in that? Or no money at all?
No cash bail system at all. It will all be based upon risk, and depending on the individual's risk, what conditions they may or may not have placed upon them pending trial. And you will have all of the full arguments within that, within that range of an individual that risks out as medium and may be eligible for release. You'll have the district attorney and the representation arguments in the court to basically allow the judge to decide whether that person poses an unreasonable risk or not. Now, the interesting thing is that if the judge rules that even with an individual that risks out as medium, poses an unreasonable risk for release, there is no, no alternate release. It's a yes or a no. Additional motions can be filed for rehearing of the, of the person's release. But it's kind of akin to a no-bail ruling by the judge.
So, so I would assume that there's gonna be more people in jail, which will cost us money.
That is the sixty-four thousand, or possibly sixty-four million dollar question. A lot of counties are wrestling with that right now. I personally believe in Trinity County that we will realize a small reduction in our jail population. And the reason why I say that is because we're one of the counties that prior to SB ten did not have the resources to run a pre-trial supervision program. So essentially, now we will be receiving state aid to run a pre-trial supervision program, and we will be able to hopefully bring that jail population down, which we know is at critical mass.
All right, interesting.
And switching gears real quick to collections, I just wanted to let the board know that we did recently send out FTV notices to all California residents and standard collections notices to non-California residents. So hopefully, we always see an uptick in revenue after letters go out. So we're hoping that we see the results of this at the end of this first quarter of collections. Keep my fingers crossed on that one.
I don't know what FTV is.
Franchise tax for taxes.
Good morning. Shawna Nelson, HR Director. So our veteran service officer has announced his retirement. It's bittersweet for me. I am excited for him to enter into a well-deserved retirement, but I have enjoyed working with this gentleman for many years. And, you know, he has served our community veteran incredibly well. He has graciously provided us four months' notice, so that's gonna give us more than ample time to, you know, process the recruitment and veteran that process. And he will be able to close out the first half-year reports before he leaves, which is helpful for us. I just wanted to let you know.
And that's a half-time position?
It is a half-time position.
All right, any other departments?
Thank you, Chair. I'm passing out our two thousand and eighteen code enforcement status report. The board asked me to bring these every month or so, and so I'm prepared to do that. What it shows is that as of Friday, and this was on Friday, there are forty-six code enforcement actions that were taken on behalf of the Trinity County Sheriff's Department. Just to kind of explain what this form is, if you look under the notice of violation, that's the violations that were issued this year. There are a few that are blank. Those are because we're taking action on prior years. So we had permanent injunctions in place if someone violated its eligibility to go back on and we moved cannabis that's being grown in violation of permanent injunction or settlement agreement. But as you can see, we're up to forty-six. It's my understanding they went out on Monday as well, so that number's increased slightly. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer. Yes, sir?
For cannabis only or for all violations?
These are ones that have cannabis component to them. So they may have additional violations that, but they're based on the cannabis ordinance.
All right.
Just one thing to report. The board about two months ago approved a third code enforcement officer, and I'm pleased to say that we have all three officers on the job now. So we have three full-time code enforcement officers.
I have a question. This relates to the gentleman that was first spoken public comment. Didn't get from him, if you're, are you looking on the situation or?
Yes, Mr. Nigel, yeah, I've been in contact with him. Actually, we have a, almost a team working on it now, which is both kind of counsel, Mr. Tippett and myself, and our mental officers. We're all familiar with this, issues I know, and we're gonna address the board on a resolution or constitution checks. Board meeting?
Okay. And then the second public comment person, you to the full board, or you at least to the ad hoc, I'd like to see how many decisions we had of license?
Yeah, I've already put a request into Rick, asked him if you would, and he's looking into it right now.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions, Chair? All right, members of the board. Yes, I am. Bobby?
I left my planner, but I wanted to talk about something Letty talked about earlier, the four reversals. That's four lives that were saved, so, I mean, way to go.
John?
Yesterday only, out of county travel was PSA two. We had our regular PSA two executive board meeting and also a nutrition meeting that the board was invited to, to spend time and listen to all complaints from all our contract providers. Yes, that's my out of county travel.
I do not have any.
No out of county travel for me. Okay, reports from ad hocs, state legislation cannabis.
I have nothing to report out regarding that, and perhaps it's time to shut it down.
Oh, this is still moving. But at the moment, I don't, the governor did sign that bill. Let me, please, give me my papers. The governor did sign the bill on the temporary license issues, and there's some detail, fine details we need to review, but I'll bring that next meeting.
Okay. Permanent cannabis ordinance, commercial?
Last time we announced, we were expecting the cleanup on cultivation to be on the eleventh. It's gonna be in front of the planning commission on the twenty-fifth. We hope to bring the amendments back from manufacturing at the next meeting. And I would remind board members, it's been a while since we've mentioned this, but obviously, you can't approach, we can't have a discussion with board members on these topics because there's two of us on the ad hoc. If you have questions, comments, thoughts as board members, please make sure you let Margaret know, and she can follow them. Am I, do I still have that right, Margaret?
I'm happy to take any questions and then respond to any.
If board members have comments, questions, they want us to consider. Time is ticking for sure, but I just wanted to remind everybody on that.
Okay, I have nothing to add. You in jail?
I'm gonna defer to Director Tippett. Give us a report on progress.
A while back, we had sent the land lease agreement back to the jail for the PSCC folks. They've been processing that with the Department of Finance, and that's what we've been waiting for, for final approval, to put it to bid. Talking with them, they had a couple jails come through right at the same time, so they're a little bit behind, but she's expecting it any time now. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna bring the jail to the board next meeting for permission bid. We have complete plans, and we're ready to go. My concern continues to be the, it's a adverse project right now because construction costs have been expanding, it's well faster than what was expected, and especially with some of the terrorists that are going on still. Rebar and roofing has chopped through roofs. So we are going to also have some discussions with Senator McGuire about possible opportunities to secure more funding. But on a whole, we're looking at having it out to bid. I'm hoping, I told Sharon at PSCC that we'd really like to have it out to bid, hoping that first part of January.
Wow, okay. We were, I, I'll speak for myself. I was expecting that a little bit sooner than that. So I'd love to have a special meeting, you know, to get at least three of us here to move it forward, or four of us here. Why, Judy, please take over.
I know what you're thinking.
Go on, let's give them a direct question.
Yeah.
We know there's these delays, but gosh, we're now like almost a year in delay of sending the bid out, I think is what John's trying to say.
And we're gonna have to give it up.
Right.
It was, it was, it's been ready for about four months. We're finalized, and we've been waiting for the final. There are some things that we're dealing with. For the last year, we've been in checks, which was, it was expected to take us a bit longer. But we're now at the final stages, and the problem is, there's also a lot of other folks that are at the final stages, and wheels, the cops of bigger government turn slower. And unfortunately, we have to wait for the Department of Finance to have a meeting, which they, my understanding is they only have it every other month. And so, and not only that, the Department of Finance, the folks that were in that department a year ago, they had someone go on paternity leave or retire. I can't remember exactly what it was, but we're down, instead of having three folks, we're down to two. And so they've been pressed right now. Always makes me wonder, because it's not a whole lot of stuff that we send them.
Right.
But we did have a meeting back in, I believe it was May or June, and we've been waiting since then to get things.
Do we need to put some extra pressure on?
No, I'm expecting it to come together real soon. That was kind of the feedback I got from the SCC.
Is it time to also start letting us know what our exit plan is? How much we're gonna lose on this?
I'm not gonna be able to tell you until.
I understand that, but is it time for you to start working on this with CAO to let us know?
I think we'll be working together on that.
And you're talking about the big wheels of bigger government turning slow. It looks like ours have been turning pretty slowly also. I think it's just a remark. What can we do to make us move faster?
Well, it, right now, the help, if I could ask for any help from the board, would be working with us to secure.
You don't want this board working with you, please. You want CAO and yourself and your staff to do it.
Yeah, we would like any opportunity that you guys have to pursue further funding.
USDA, Kim Van, she's head of it, to see if you can get some more funding from them, unless you don't want that money.
Right now, I would like to have any contingency to get our hands on.
Kim has money that she's trying to give out to everybody, and she's offered it to some of the jail systems.
We'll, we'll.
I said that last two weeks ago. She came in here at the first of the year, or I brought it up at the first of the year also regarding other items, but, you know, it's money you can ignore, I don't care at this point. Thank you. Knock yourself out.
Well, Rick, every day that goes by, there's less than a chance that this jail's gonna happen. And so I beg of you not to have any more delays on our.
Okay. Well, and we'll take action on the sex to get the plans approved, and then I get to ring like from PSCC, we'll be out there getting it out on the street.
At least get it in the bid cycle for next year, so people can start really.
I mean, for this year, so it'll be ready next year. Do we need an incentive set in front of this, so that if it isn't done by a certain time, Mr. Tippett is no longer employed? I guess not.
I think that's the idea, that was it. Is that what I heard you say?
Yeah.
Which is our next meeting.
I think that's a question that we'll have to digest.
You got it.
All right. Any other questions, Rick?
Thanks, Rick. Thanks for putting up with me.
All right, we'll. No worry, reports, but sure, go ahead.
I meant to put it in my board report. I meant to inform the board last year, last year, last meeting. Many of you recall in fourteen or possibly twenty fifteen, there was quite a cry for concern about destruction of watersheds due to illegal grading. At the time, CAO Tyler and I sat with Assembly Member Jim Wood, and I know Rick's department was very limited in funding at the time to develop a grading ordinance. So wheels of government do turn slow, but we did, Assembly Member Wood has not, has been in touch about that and has not forgot that, and was able to secure us some extra money to develop a grading ordinance. So I know Rick has had that. So I know Rick has had that on his radar and things to do, and this will help a little bit on that, so I just wanted to inform the board.
All right, Will Ernest Oversight?
You asked me for dates this morning.
Yes.
Of course, I'm placing some dates.
Placing dates to work to meet in South Trenton.
And how are we paying for this?
I'll have to talk to the CAO.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. All right, on county matters. These items include non-routine or controversial matters that are listed alphabetically by department, member of the board, staff, the public may request these items to be heard out of order. Do the board have issues to be ordered? Staff?
I just want to pray for the transportation items for point three, I just informed you that you were directed.
Okay. All right, we do that. All right, public any rotations? Nope. All right, 4.1, appoint a primary and alternate representative to California State Association and County Boards of Directors. No fiscal impact.
I would be honored to continue given my many aspects of law and organization of the county. Assume supervisor grows, will that remain as alternate, but I don't want to speak to you.
That's fine. Absolutely not, I love that. Okay, we do that. Public input? Okay, we'll come back to the board. Now, John, you had a-
Sure, I can make a motion to reappoint Supervisor Morris as primary and leave it at that unless you want to also, or does anybody else want to look at being-
Alternate is what you're asking?
Yes, alternative. People keep shaking their heads on opposite end of the table.
I said I'll do it.
And, okay, and have Supervisor Gross be alternate. I second the motion.
All right, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those same side?
Thank you, Lord.
Thank you for all your hard work down there.
Thank you.
Modify the allocation list, excuse me, 4.2, modify the allocation list for the Health and Human Services Department, Human Service Division to read as follows. 10 administrative clerk one dash two, administrative clerk senior or administrative coordinator one slash two, 16 eligibility worker one slash two slash three, maximum four eligibility workers three, and four employment and training workers one slash two slash three effective October 1st, 2018, and direct that said changes being made to the allocation list. Proximate cost and salary and benefit per month at A step for administrative clerk one is $3,648, for administrative clerk two is $3,948, and administrative clerk senior is $4,280, for administrative coordinator one is $4,532, for administrative coordinator two is $4,0925, for eligibility worker one is $4,211, for eligibility worker two is $4,532, for eligibility worker three is $4,925, for employment and training worker one is $4,0532, for employment and training worker two is $4,925, and for employment and training worker three is $5,359. And next time I want to make, you make it.
Fair enough. So the board supervisors, you adopted resolution 2018-59 back on September 18th. It was approving the final budget and which is included in that are additional allocations that were funded through that new budget. That resolution inadvertently missed a couple of positions from Health and Human Services Department, so that's why I brought this item to you today. There are actually three corrections on the requested action, I apologize for not catching those prior to the agenda being published, I just wanted to read through a couple of those there for you. It says modify the allocation list for the Health and Human Services Department, 10 administrative clerk one, two, it should actually be nine, there's no change to this resolution, those were previously approved back last April. The positions were not funded, but the allocations were there, so I think that's where that mistake was made, so that should read nine. Under the eligibility, this is where we were adding two, so it should read 15 instead of 16. We originally had 13 that were approved and the budget approved two additional, so that would make that 15. And then where it says the employment training workers, it should read three, so there was, we're not adding any, again, just like the administrative clerk series, the allocations were added and approved by you back in last April, but they were not funded, and so the budget just added the funding source for it. So what we're asking today is just to add the two eligibility worker one, two, and three series, increasing it from 13 to 15, again, all of this.
Okay. Any other questions?
Real quick, backup is correct, spreadsheet.
The figures are correct, yes. The physical figures, yes. Just some of it's not necessary.
Got it.
Okay. Any comment from the public? Well, that'll bring it back.
You'd like a motion? Like to make a motion to accept 4.2 with the changes from 10 to nine administrative clerk three, and from 16 to 15 for eligibility worker one, two, three, and from four to three, employee and training worker one, two, and three effective October 18th.
Okay. Inseparable. On favor with modifications, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those same side? All right. With that, we will take a 10 minutes, I'm going to give you a 10 minute break to-
Did they go to the general, pay attention? Did you go to the general?
Yeah. I'm not just-
Onto 4.3, receive a report concerning SB1 revenues and the potential effect on Proposition Six in Trinity County Department of Transportation. No fiscal impact in this report.
Before it starts, can I make a comment regarding this, this item?
Yes.
I've had several constituents contact me thinking that this is supporting or not supporting a proposition coming up, and I'm looking at this strictly as information as to what we, will happen to us, whether this ballot proposition passes or not, so Rick is advising us on what our future is with our roads, whether it passes or not.
This is neutral to-
Thank you.
That, it's just, it's a factual presentation on where the department sits on the activities that are going on and explain some different facets of different things that are going on, some people understand the whole picture.
Perfect, thank you, Rick.
Yeah, I start off, I've even called pavement management because that's what we're really talking about, is pavement management and ways to fund things that we're doing. Again, you've, you've heard me talk about pavement condition index, which PCI gives you a range of what different roads look like, 100 being great, 10 being bad, and, and 10 to 25 is, is what's considered poor, and so you can see the road there at a 10. We had been oscillating between 59 and 57 for the last year and a half, and we have 57 on there, which usually is a lot of transfers or a bunch of tumor cracking and a couple of potholes, but overall, the pavement's in fair condition, but it's, it's at a point where if you don't deal with it pretty soon, it goes bad pretty quick. And as I've mentioned, where pavement index right now is 59 last year, and then we recently saw something that says it's getting around 57, but for the most part, two thirds or three quarters of our roads are in fair, good condition, and we have a little, we have 6% that are failed, which ruins that 10%, or that PCI at 10 to 25 that showed, and then we also have some that are in poor condition. Just a quick map of where they're sitting at, please ignore the San Bernardino Ventura PCI, because I stole, I sold these pictures from them. Anyways, it's, as you can see statewide, it's not just Trinity that's struggling, but overall, it's been going down. What you will see is some of the urbanized areas are catching up a little bit more because they've embraced pavement management for now about 20 years. Just a quick graph that shows you, if you start with excellent pavement, the condition of the pavement goes down and it gets to a point where it drops off real quick. The idea is to catch it when it's in fair, good condition so that you can chip seal, crack seal, because those are cheap, they're $1 to $5.30 a square yard, and if you don't catch it, that's about halfway through the life, if you let it go the other half to where it fails, it's about $51, up to $51 a square yard to replace. So if you catch it early, you know, fix it in a bucket square yard, over and over and over, you can keep that road going for a long time and save a lot of money. Anyways, part of our problem over time is gas taxes. The gas tax that was established, was actually established in 1932 at $0.2 a gallon, which ironically happens to be 30 cents a gallon, which is about, when you adjust it for inflation, which is about where it's been adjusted to today. Gas tax beforehand has always been a fixed value, meaning that it was fixed at price per gallon of gas, not adjusted for inflation, so if gas went up, it didn't go up, if inflation went up, if construction costs went up, nothing took that up, it's still been 18 cents for a while. And that's shown here on the graph, which you see in 1994 was the last increase, it was, started in 91, the 95, was raised to 18 cents and then stayed at 18 cents until SB1, and then SB1 raised it up to 30 cents and then adjusted for inflation, so the inflation curve is the one showing there, and that's inflation, that's not a construction inflation, construction inflation actually is around about 15% higher than, than inflation for durable goods. But now it's fixed and it will increase as the years go on based on the inflation rate. And the other problem we've had is that gas consumption efficiencies have increased, and again, since it's a, it's a per mile, or per gallon of gas sold, your car is now making three times the mileage, your vehicle miles traveled are still going up, but your actual amount you're collecting is going down, so between inflation and that, we've lost a lot of value in, in the purchasing power of the gas tax, what it was in 1994. So anyways, the, sorry, going back, they estimate that right now with inflation and mileage adjustment, that the 18 cents is worth nine cents in 2014. My understanding, in 2018, they're saying it's worth six cents now, so it's been quite a decrease of purchasing power. So anyways, just real quick, our local pavement strategies, I'm going to just abbreviate it real quick, is anything that's main road or collector, it's got an ADT of over 400, we try to keep paved, everything less than that is going to be chip sealed, and we try to main, if we have pavement in good condition on low volume roads, we'll try to maintain the AC, but if not, essentially, our, our replacement strategy will always be chip seal. Real quick, chip, crack seals, talk about the, you know, when you put the goo out on the highways, about a bucket yard, where chip seals are $3, double chip is $5.30 per yard, and then digouts, yeah, $3 per yard for every 5% of the digouts you need to do. And once we get up to, once you like, for example, doing a chip seal with 15% digouts, then the cost gets about $14. You really go past that, you're starting to get into more of the, where you want to look at. AC, concrete overlay or reclamation, so, but you see that as we go up to AC overlay, it's 15 to $30 per yard, and full depth reclamation, which means chewing up the first six inches of road, grinding it all, mixing it together, rolling it flat and throwing a new drive surface on it, is, ranges anywhere from $2,350 with the chip seal to $51. And a re, one of the things that's important to talk about is, is that roads, you have two things in a road system, you have the foundation, which is everything underneath it, then you have the drive surface. And the drive surface is important because it provides a moisture barrier to keep water from getting in underneath, and when water gets in underneath the base and washes the fines out, that's when the pavement collapses and you end up with potholes, so that's one of the reasons why you want to keep it watertight. And then expected pavement life, 30 years for AC, 10 years for chip, we kind of have a lower use here in Trinity, so we've been seeing our AC the last, up to 30 years, in some places, we've had chip last 15 to 20 years. Anyways, and for the road department, I'm going to get more over into the funding. Road department has really four principal funding sources right now, which are the highway users tax, which you can hear me call HUDA quite a bit, and the HUDA was, was last year was operating in, and this year was operating at 9.8 cents, and it originally started out at 17.3, but because of the gas tax swap and the revenue neutrality rules, that gas, that tax had actually dropped down to nine cents from 17. So where I talked about that 18 cents back there, Governor Schwarzenegger done some hijinks with it, I'll call it, I don't know what it was, and unfortunately, that 18 cents is really at nine cents right now. And then Secure Rule Schools was one, that used to be about 80% of our budget, and that went away, actually, it started out Forest Reserves, then it became Secure Rule Schools, which augmented Forest Reserves, and Secure Rule Schools has gone away. We did get two years of surprise funding from it after missing a year, but I'm really not expecting much after this year. But that's about $100,000, make stat, state match exchange, that's been $351,000, and the new SB1, which is core of SB1, which is RMRA, which is Road Maintenance Rehabilitation Account, that's the, that's the one where I come to you once a year now, and I talk about the roads that we're going to fix, and I have you guys approve it, because the new law has accountability much more extensively built into it, where the old HUDA, you said you just had to use it for road use, so I could plow or, or do clean bushes or clear ditches and things. The new monies that we have through SB1, you have to spend it on road repair, you have to do something on the drive surface, so I have to account for it. And then we have the non-traditional funds, and when I say non-traditional, it means either they're, they're formulary but don't come annually, and they come for special projects, and, or they're competitively fed. And the first one we have is the Federal Lands Access Program, which is a three-year competitive cycle. Then we have the things that we need to use to recover, which is emergency relief, CDAA or FEMA funds, and those are the funds that pay for disaster, but as you know, that, well, maybe you do know or don't know, they all have matches from 10% to 25%, and we can use the RMRA to match the federal relief or the emergency relief or CDAA or FEMA money so that we can kind of advance our projects a little bit faster. And then finally, we also have the State Transportation Program, which is STIP, talk about that every other year, and one of the things about SB1 that it did was the STIP was because of the value, losing the value of money, the STIP was coming to a point where they were deprogramming projects- losing the value of money, the STIP was coming to a point where they were deprogramming projects two years ago. As you might remember, we had to deprogram Wildwood Road at that time. And this, SB one brought money back into the STIP, which raised it back up to the levels that it was before. So now we have good STIP cycles that can fund projects. And then finally, we have the HSET program, which is striping guardrails and safety projects. And again, that's also a two-year, a cycle competitive, competitive cycle. So anyways, there's been a couple of questions about, well, what is gas tax, SB one, and Prop six? The gas tax, when they talk about the gas tax, the old gas tax is the HUDA, and that was what was currently used to maintain everything that we have. SB one was new, was the gas tax that was passed by the legislature about a year and a half ago, and that's what raised the gas tax back in November that brings in the RMRA money to repair the road. Proposition six is one which says that they will reset all the gas, the only gas tax that's in effect will be effective January first to two thousand seventeen, which means that anything that happened past that would have to have a two-thirds vote of the legislature, both Senate and Assembly. Then it'll have to be approved by the governor to go to the voters for a two-thirds vote. In California, that's, they struggle just to get a one cent gas tax down the valley or in the populated areas. So quite honestly, it's, it's near to impossible to achieve. So it would be a very, very tough road to hold to get something passed to take care of a road. So anyways, this kinda gives you a graph of statewide, what those different funding sources are. The things, the orange, yellow, and light orange are really the HUTAs that I talk about. And you can see in thirteen, fourteen, we had a peak in the HUDA because our, the gas tax swap was back up. It was actually about twenty-one, twenty-two cents a gallon. And so we were really, at that time, we were bringing in about one point four. Because what happens is, is the HUDA gets distributed to a bunch of different sources, and the counties and the cities are at the bottom of the pile. So if the HUDA takes a hit, the first folks that are gonna feel that are gonna be the counties and the cities. And so we, as, as it's oscillated up and down in price from seventeen cents to nine cents, or twenty-two cents, twenty-one cents to nine cents, you can see that it lost value and we were down to under one point five billion dollar statewide collection. SB one was passed in seventeen, last year in April, and it had a loan repayment to try to bring some money in, and also had the Road Maintenance Rehabilitation Account. One of the things about the, the Road Maintenance Rehabilitation Account, when it did come back, it came back to cities as based on population, but it came back to counties based on seventy-five percent registered vehicles and twenty-five percent road miles. And that's important to us because what that does is it actually drives the value of the dollars we give back. For every dollar we invest, we usually get about eight bucks back into the county through the gas tax the way it's set up. Rural counties with lots of road miles and low population, the road, the twenty-five percent road miles is really getting, it is bringing money into the county. If we were just strictly population-based, we would only get a little bit.
You said seventy-five percent comes from DMVPs?
Registered vehicles. It's not, it's not fees, it's number of vehicles registered, it's just a count.
Just a count. Do you know if that includes the PNOs?
No, it does not. Those are not operating on the roads.
On the roads, okay.
Yeah.
Did you need to finish?
No, I was just gonna say, electric vehicles are the other ones that before SB one did not pay. Now they pay a, effective twenty-twenty, they pay a hundred dollar fee.
But if I register my wrecks that I own, I have to get insurance on them, so it's still not worth it.
If you're gonna put it on the road.
They can't go on the road.
Okay, then, then.
Never mind.
So remind all of us again, prior to SB one, what staffing levels were you, you were at? And then what are you looking to step up and extra money to a project?
Yeah, I'll get there here in a second. Just for reading, for anybody that's interested, this is, this is about the simplest plain language I could find to explain how the money that's coming in gets distributed. But you can see that, that out of the DMV fees that we pay, the diesel tax that we pay, and the gas tax that we pay, they all go, and plus the electrical vehicles, that's the ZEB fee, they all go over to Road Maintenance Rehabilitation Account. The only money that, that doesn't go into that account is funds that are collected. There's a, they have a, they have a calculation and formula that they base what you pump into off-road vehicles and boats. And they say since those aren't, since they are paying the gas tax, but they aren't on the roads, they, that money is set aside to go to boat ramps and off-road vehicle trails and things like that. So there is a little bit that's pushed aside. I think it's about a hundred million every two years or something. But it is, it's to offset that collection that they have for marine-type activities. And that's fair. I mean, it's, again, it's a, the gas tax is meant to be a user tax, which goes back to the user. And so with OHVs and boats, it goes back to those activities. So anyways, there is a new, there's a slight bump in diesel gas tax, and some of the DMV fees for registering vehicles are what goes into transit. So there was also, SB one did bring about a hundred thousand dollar boost to Trinity, which will allow us to continue on providing the transit services that we provided. We were starting to get kinda short, and that's helping us. So, so again, SB one was both for the Road Maintenance Rehabilitation Account and for transit. On the Road Maintenance Rehabilitation Account, there are some off-the-top things. They take out about four hundred million for state bridges and culverts, two hundred million for the counties that collect sales tax on themselves. They did get a little bit extra to augment that, and so they get some of this new gas tax. They get a hundred, and, and it's easy to participate in that, all you have to do is pass gas tax. A county, county gas tax. Easy for them, not too easy for us. Also, there's a hundred thousand, or a hundred million for active transportation with pedestrians and biking and all that, with some different money set aside for freeway patrol, local planning grants, university research, and workforce development. And university research is actually, for us, has been real important because they've been going in and they've been testing new pavement types, particularly on low-volume roads, to, that have come out to tell us how to pave a road and not get it to crack. And it's actually, and not only helpful in paving, but it's also been helpful in the airports. So we've had a lot of good research that's been done recently to help us out.
Not our airports, you know.
I, I know, we still gotta fix it. Anyways, this road report, this is our road report to past history. I've shown this two years earlier, this shows down the work that we had done. We were, we had some good years and some not-so-good years down until about sixteen, seventeen, where we really started struggling with funds, and I'll show you why here in a minute. But we, in twelve thirteen, where I was saying we had the, when it was up around twenty-two cents, we did about a million dollars worth of road surface work, and then we were down to a hundred and fourteen. But overall, the average was about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually. And that was back in seven, eight, and eight, nine, I wanna remind you that we still were getting about three million, three and a half million dollars for Secure Rule Schools. So that was before we started taking the big hit on that. So this has been the road revenue budget, and this is what I expect for those funds that I told you about. The only one I didn't mention was RSTP contribution. That comes from federal government. And I rolled the dice on that, thinking it's gonna continue to come. So I don't know until we get the bill, but right now it's at sixteen thousand, four hundred and twenty-one dollars a year. But you can see that, as I talked about in the HUDA, it was up at twenty-two cents and then it dropped all the way down to nine cents. And you can see in sixteen, seventeen, it had dropped down to one point six, where we were getting about one point two in the old HUDA, which never really changes. It's always about one point two million. And we're getting about three hundred and eighty thousand in new HUDA. So that, that oscillates anywhere between two and a half mil, or one and a half million down to, down to the three hundred and eighty thousand. So it, it oscillates back and forth. Well, in nineteen twenty, they reset it back to seventeen point two cents, and they also adjusted for inflation. So those are the projected HUDA amounts that we're getting, which is, goes up to, from two point five to two point eight in twenty-two, twenty-three. And then we have the RMRA, which also kicked in last year a little bit. This year, it's kicking in more. But in year twenty twenty-one, when the HUDA, new HUDA kicks in, there's also a little component that kicks over to that. And so it'll raise up just a little bit to one point eight million. But in the picture I'm trying to draw, those are the funds that we received. You see in sixteen, seventeen, that it was at two point eight million, and right after it passed, for instance, this upcoming fiscal year will be at five point two. So it, it did bring back quite a bit more people. And again, the two million dollars I must designate for road staff. So what I'm expecting is by the time we get around to twenty twenty-one, we're spending about two point seven million dollars in staffing. If we were to spend two point, two million dollars, well, actually, let me back up. Five point seven million is what we need to keep the roads at the current PCI we have at fifty-seven. And we just ran that number again, it's still five point seven million. And there's a red in there, and there's the blue, and the red and the yellow. Those are, those are the roads that we're gonna focus flap and stiff and those big dollar amounts on so that we can do big projects. Road maintenance is supposed to be little, little dollars spread wide. So we get, it's hard to put stiff money on the green. We're gonna focus on the red, and the idea is, is to hopefully reduce that, that red chunk, or yellow chunk, a little bit more. And then even with two million dollars twenty years from now, we still struggle with half of our roads being in bad shape and then more being in poor shape. We're, we're gonna be struggling to keep up, but again, I'm hoping that the, the stiff and all those things can keep that red much lower. So anyways, there, real quick, those are competitive funds. What I kinda expect to see, we do get flap next year at eight point two million to do some stuff on that news, and then the other ones will probably be Canyon Creek. We get the STIP, which we're probably gonna be focusing on Wildwood Road and some of the other projects that we've talked about over the while. We get the FEMA, FHWA, that's to fix the stor, excuse me, the storm damage that's happened. And then we have a large HSET grant where we're doing guardrails and, and striping. And I'm expecting it to kinda be around four hundred thousand over time. So anyways, as we've talked about, we're road spending, when we have money coming in, we've tried to take our revenues and we split it in half, and that's what gives us our staff. So in, kinda going back to your question earlier, in the year sixteen, seventeen, since we were down to two point eight, we, through our different monies that we had, we could only hire and employ eleven and a half people that year. With the gas tax that we have approved, we can take it back up to, I'm expecting initially to get to twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty-two, might go higher. If, if, but I'm gonna get, kinda incrementally get to certain places. And it's also, it's, and be quite honest with you, it's hard to hire qualified people in the county. Remember that they have to not only be trained and qualified, but they also have to meet FHWA licensing vehicle requirements, which means they have to be drug-free and all those other things, which are, present challenges sometimes. But anyways, the more money we have, the more road crews have to bring on. It's a simple equation. Money goes down, road crews go down. Money goes up, road crews go up. So that's, that's how you guys, or we have talked over time, how we establish staffing. Twenty-one folks is important because nineteen has been determined through experience in the snowstorms that we had. If we have a decent-sized snowstorm, with nineteen folks, we can get to all the roads within forty-eight hours after a big snowstorm. So when it's down at eleven, we can't get to a lot of roads. At nineteen, we do alright. I mean, it's not, we're not chasing snowflakes, but we can at least get, we can stand in front of buses, keep the main roads open, and get to the side roads once the snow stops in pretty quick order. So anyways, how much do we need to keep PCI at fifty-nine? Well, I've already given that away, that's five point seven million dollars. So that's what we're working with. So the question is, is well, what happens with Proposition six? Proposition six essentially predates, it has two, two components to it. First of all, it predates SB, or SB one came after the cutoff date for Prop six. So it will eliminate SB one, it'll cut all the things of SB one out. And not only that, but it also goes back to HUDA. And as I mentioned, with HUDA, they adjust the gas, they adjust the tax every year based on what the value is matching inflation. And, and number of gallons, it's supposed to stay revenue neutral. But the thing is, it oscillates anywhere from nine cents to twenty-two cents. Well, sixteen, seventeen, the date that they selected, it's at the low part of that cycle. So what they'll do is they'll essentially cut HUDA in half of what we used to receive. So it's kind of a double whammy. Not only does it hit the SB one, but it also goes back into old gas tax and cuts the value of it in half, which it's already only worth about a quarter of what it was originally. So it just takes a lot of the HUDA out of the equation. So essentially, we'll go, we'll be at, at, we would end up losing a little bit, but we get to four point five, but immediately effective next year, not this fiscal year, but next fiscal year, we would drop down to two point one million dollars and two point one nine, and it would stay at two point one nine for pretty much ever. I mean, there's slight increases, but those slight increases come from increases in the motor pool. All the rest of the funds will do nothing, it'll always remain the same. So as you, as you can imagine, that means it's bad today and just gets worse and worse and worse. So anyways, what happens if we're at, at two point one million dollars? I expect we'll have about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually to repair the roads, which means that three-quarters of our roads in twenty years, actually ten years, will be, will be in failed condition. Eighty-five percent of our roads would be in poor, very poor condition in twenty years. It just means we're gonna be struggling, or really struggling. So what does that mean? What I would probably be doing if SB one were to be eliminated is I'd come back and I'd recommend that we discontinue maintenance on all residential roads. And residential roads no longer be plowed because we'd be down to nine, eight or nine road crew members instead of the nineteen that we need. So we gotta essentially focus on the primary roads and then go right back into trying to maintain what we have, which is pushing rocks and cutting ditches and everything. Rehabilitation work would be reserved strictly for primary roads. Again, road crew cut, as I mentioned, seventy-five percent of roads would fail within twenty-five, PCI less than twenty-five in twenty years. I expect that most residential roads would have to be reverted back to gravel. And the last one is one that would be really tough, is that the satellite yards that we use, which is manning the outside yards, the ones that we had closed. When we're at twenty-two people, I can put people in those outside yards. And so I have someone starting in Trinity Center, someone starting in Xenia, Hyman Palm, and Hopkins Bar when we had the snowstorm. So, you know, I don't have to wait for someone to get out there, I've got them out there now. This happens, those folks go away. I, I can't afford, I mean... I can't afford, I mean, with nine people, I can't afford to keep the satellite yard maintained, because that would take all out where the primary collection of roads are, which is Hayford and Weaverville. So it would be, we'd start there and kinda spread out to those areas, and it just means that it'd take a lot longer to get done what we need to be done. So anyways, I did put some things in there. Rebuild California, these are, these are not anything to do with Prop 6 propaganda, but they are sites that show where I can ride these numbers from. Rebuilding California is Caltrans website, the CTC. And Save California Streets, which is a study that is actually paid for by all the counties through CSAC.
Okay, and CSAC, which is a lobby group, and, but it does have a couple MTA, MTAs?
MTA and MTC, yes. As, it's all the counties, or what, it does have lobbyists involved, so. Yeah, the Save California Streets does, but the road, the report that's done is strictly about pavement.
Right.
Quality in the state of California, and what you can do with various scenarios, with various budgetary scenarios. So with that, I can answer any questions.
So if SB1 remains, will you be bringing back an updated snowplow plan, snow?
No, that, I don't, I don't really see that changing, because the plan is, is based on us having 19 people.
Oh, okay.
So if I, if I have 21 or 22, it just means that, that we can improve our delivery.
I was thinking it was based on the lower amount.
No, it's, it's based on that. After, after I get below 19, I start losing the ability to provide services. And kinda in the priority that we go, we still always start with priority one, which the main roads, and then go down from there. It just means that we would be focusing only on priority one, because that's all we have to focus, to focus on.
Got you. Thank you.
Okay, you're putting a pretty ugly scenario out there for this Proposition 6. If it passes or doesn't pass, what is the chances of this passing versus not passing? Should we be preparing ourselves?
I, I can't answer that question.
I mean, is there any, I mean, does anybody have any, is it getting momentum? I mean, I understand it, I mean.
It's, it's, I, I.
I'm just saying, should we, should we be prepared for the outlook of negativity here, if that's what it seems like is coming, or?
I, I can't answer to how Proposition 6 is going.
Well, we're gonna know there soon.
Yes, we all know about it. Six.
Okay, any other questions?
You continue.
Oh, there it is, I'm sorry.
So with the present administration at the White House, they've spoken quite often about infrastructure. Have you seen anything coming from, from there at all?
Yeah, the, the Secure Rural Schools funding for last year and this year was, was actually Omni-Bus, it was a surprise. We had seen it go away, and they actually put it into the Omnibus Bill that came back in December, right after the gas tax, or, not the gas tax, but the tax cut. And you might recall, there was, there was quite a bit of stuff in there that has surprised a lot of folks. So we did get that, but the, the rest of that, one of the things that Trump had talked about was he wanted to push a lot more responsibility away from the federal government, onto the local government. So he was gonna make more monies available, but it was gonna have to have larger matches. So he's, you were gonna have to produce more money, instead of where federal projects now are, you only put in 10%, or 11.47. His idea, or their concept was more having, even though they were gonna have more money, it was gonna have to be matched with bigger local grants. So we would probably have to come up with, you know, unknown, but they were talking about 30 and 40% matches, which is, is, can be a struggle for us a lot of times.
So what about, besides roads, is there anything with bridges, specifically the historical bridge, like in Keith District?
Well, I, I, unfortunately, in '51, they did not address the bridge funding. You can take STIP and fund with bridges. Bridge funding is an issue right now in California. They're programmed out about 20 years now on the bridges. We're fortunate, we've had a lot of bridges that we've been able to get to before today, because I kinda had a concern about it, so we programmed a lot of bridges earlier. But that, that one was, I wish it was addressed better than it was, but we were still happy to get what we got.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you for that refreshers course.
Any public?
Finishing. So possibly, you can thank the environmentalist corporations for the taking away the rural schools payments, since we aren't working in those areas, areas that used to pay for that. And also, have any of the agencies, since, I'm thinking of 299 Buckhorn project, that the question is, possibly, with all the heavy traffic from the fires and everything, that good new road is now probably on the radar concerning how poor it is, and possibly taking some of the big money that, that the agencies, the companies, everybody who worked with that, maybe they would have it in their hearts to help with that, since they've made lots of money, to, to. Eventually, you guys will want to, Transportation and State will want to change, I mean, tax the people concerning that. And so it's just, I was wondering if you have any comments on that, and also concerning Prop 6, also, the people are taxed enough already. So, so do you have any comments concerning Buckhorn? And, and I've already heard that, oh, it's so damaged, it's damaged, and it's so new. So anyway, it's just a concern and an observation by more, more people than myself. So just, do you have comment on that at all? Maybe they can take them, take some money out of their budgets to help?
Rick, why don't we just have that? What, just a little off the topic, but let's just give a very quick rundown on fire damage and, and what Caltrans and the feds are planning to do for county roads and state roads.
Yep. Fire damage is, is covered under either CDA or by FEMA, and sometimes actually by FHWA, Central Puddle Lands, it depends on where the disaster, what road it happens on. On state highways, that's a, what's called an on-system road, which means that it kicks back to the federal government, and the federal government helps to repair it. So based on the damage that they have, the federal government come in and repair that. Usually, what we do on these higher roads is we take a look at the pavement condition index prior to the fire and then after the fire, and then whatever the fire contributed to that, they'll go out and make appropriate repairs to bring the pavement condition index back to what it was before the fire.
Is there any talk about what's gonna happen on 299, or?
I, I haven't heard.
So they haven't done their analysis yet?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hey, Fort, probably earned some rallying points from supervisor family, but well, we're on the topic of roads. Because we don't have distro in this county, I've had the distinct pleasure of enjoying the Banduzen and Alderpoint Road very frequently lately. Is there any prayer or hope in my lifetime of getting any roadwork done in South County? That road is like, I drive a big truck, I'm like, not really scared of tough roads, live off the grid, but that road is kind of becoming terrifying, only because of like sections where there's one lane totally in the river, or ski jumps. But people have spray painted those spots, so you know they're coming. But is there like, any plans? I know it's not the most populated area of this county and whatnot, but it is like literally getting to the point that a rainstorm could end sections of that road, and then people in Xenia can't get to Garberville, you know, like, I don't know, something to think about. Hope.
Didn't I see something on the screen regarding those roads?
I missed part of that, sorry.
Go ahead, well, go ahead.
The federal lands access grant that we get, the 8-point, whatever it is, million dollars, is, is actually earmarked for Banduzen. There is a, there is a part of Banduzen that, that is outside of that, that we'll need to repair with future road projects, but from about where that really sharp curve is, about the best way to explain.
I know what you're talking about.
Everybody will know what I'm talking about. We're actually fixing that curve, and fixing some retaining little spots, fixing the river, and then repaving the road from that curve all the way to the other federal project that we have. Quite honestly, in the last five, six years, we've probably spent, dollar for dollar, for every dollar we spent on the other side, this side of the county, we spent a couple dollars over there in federal money. I mean, the feds have really taken liking to that area and pumped a lot of money into it, and so we'll see some more go into it to repair some stuff. And then there's also funds to fix the damage, the road damage in that. Right now, as you recall, early report action, we sent that over to Central Federal Lands, requesting that they help us fix that. And what we're hoping to do is get that rolled into the flat job that we're gonna be doing. So it's gonna be happening all of once. Right now, it's scheduled for next summer, but it depends on how right away goes, if we can finish buying what we need.
Fantastic. It is programmed.
It is programmed.
It is programmed, and it was programmed.
About three years ago.
Three years ago, it's gonna go a year and a half.
That's fantastic.
And it is federal highway funds.
Makes sense about that, but it sounds pretty good, thank you.
Rick's saying he'd sidestep the state.
Cool.
A little bit.
Awesome. Thank you, yes.
Any other questions? All right, that.
There is one thing I wanna comment on closing, is that Caltrans is gonna go through this same problem too. So my concern is that rural areas will take a disproportional hit if SB1 gas tax will go away. My other fear is that anytime the state comes up short on money, they come looking to the counties and the cities for the backfill. So that will be my other concern, this was, if there was a change in the gas tax. There's nothing saying that it would happen, but it could, there's the potential based on past activities.
All right, thank you, Rick. Okay, with that, we have an addendum. Sub项is, so we have addendum A, approval amendment number four to the agreement with Dr. Daniel Harwood, increasing the maximum cost by $10,000 for fiscal year retained services of surgeons perform autopsies. Additionally, $10,000 for fiscal year for a total of $55,000 for fiscal year for the sheriff's budget. Thank you for patiently sitting here all day.
So we're just requesting, so I did, a few months ago, I did amendment number three. My intent with that was to renew the contract for a year. Mistakenly, I put extend the contract, and so it got caved back to me, saying that we needed to increase the max cost of the county. $45,000, I believe, was what we went up to last year, and it's never a guarantee, or really, it's just a guess at how many people, you know, how many deaths we're going to have in the county a year. And so this year, we had a little bit of a rise, and so we're requesting an extra $10,000. I also added on for fiscal year, so that the whole of $55,000 will cover 18, 19.
I have a question you may or may not be able to answer. I assume not all deaths have autopsies, or?
Correct. We roughly have anywhere from 80 to 85 deaths in the county that we, as the coroner's office cover for a year. That estimates out to roughly seven per month, but not all of those take autopsies, and sometimes we have more than that, so.
So it's up to the sheriff's offices to decide which one needs an autopsy and which one doesn't. See, you did know all this information.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Any questions from the audience? Okay, we'll bring it back.
How about a motion to approve and accept sheriff's addendum item?
All right, all those are papers signed by the same eye?
Eye.
Pose, same side. All right. Good luck, hopefully we won't have to use any more money. All right. If I'm mistaken, we're gonna go to closed session. Closed session, 5.1, government code section 54956.9, conference of legal counsel, significant exposure to litigation. 5.2, government code section 54954.5, conference of legal counsel, existing litigation to cases, Pena abuses Finley and Ware versus White. 5.3, government code section 54954.5, legal counsel, conference of legal counsels anticipated litigation case one, and a subsequent, which is move to discuss or take action on public employing appointment, agriculture commission seals weights and measure, and find that the need to take immediate action came to detection. Government code section 54954.5, public appointment, agriculture commissions, boots and measures, and seals. With that, or is there any comment on closed session?
Doesn't sound good.
Glad we got your approval.
Doesn't sound good.
All right, with that, we'll take five minutes and go close. Okay, we are coming out of close. Item 5.1, direction was given to counsel. Item 5.2, we received a overview of current litigation. And 5.3, direction was given to counsel. And item A, no, the, this.
The subsequent.
Subsequent, we voted to allow Shelley to make an offer. With that, we're adjourned.